You guys are ignoring me.
Trying to, trying to, but we can't. Alrighty. We are gonna move this to here. That's Joe worked that out and we discussed it, so. Alright. Alrighty, righty, righty. Alright, just keep in mind that, like you said, the mics are live right now, so they pick up everything, and we are live streaming this meeting, so it'll be picked up. Alright, let me just, before we get started, I'll point out a couple of people. So we have the town supervisor with us, the deputy supervisor, the town clerk, councilwoman Scott, well, a member of our planning board. Hello, Mr. Chaudry. Um, obviously trustee Brain's coming up, Jason Pintagaro, who is our, who is our village engineer, our village attorney, and in the back, we have our DPW superintendent, our police chief, our fire chief, and our building inspector and code enforcement officer. Alright, before we get started, and we do a formal ceremony for, this is gonna be good. Can I get everybody to stand, face the flag for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could remain standing for a second, I think it's especially poignant tonight in the fact that we are, we are recognizing a superstar in our high school, one of our student athletes, and today, three teachers, and it looks like four children were murdered in Nashville. So I'd like to start the meeting off with a moment of silence for those lost souls. Alright, please take your seats. Alright, so who do we have in the back? I see some proud parents, right? So who do we got? So sir, you're?
I'm Barry Beloga.
Mr. Beloga, and you ma'am? Alright, this is the star right here. We've seen the videos, and let me guess, coach? Just a coach. You're never just a coach. What's your, what's your name, sir?
Dave Foyer.
Dave Foyer, okay, good. I'll pronounce it right now. Alright, well, I think what we're gonna do first is we'd like to recognize just an outstanding student athlete, and that's an important thing. We always put student in front of athlete because it is the most important part, and you've rocked it on both sides of the house. So I'm gonna ask the town supervisor to come up, and we're both gonna read a proclamation, alright? So I'm gonna have you come up, and we'll do it right here. I think our voices are booming enough. First of all, I feel like I'm around a superstar right now. This is, gosh, I don't get nervous around people, but I'm getting a little nervous. Okay, so here's mine. So from the village board, whereas Carrie Beloga, Cornwall Central High School class of 2023, is a national cross-country champion and continues to bring great honor distinction to her local community. In 2022, Carrie celebrated athletic accomplishments as a Cornwall dragon, the likes of which may never be replicated. To wit, she was acknowledged as national champion by Champ Sports on December 10th in San Diego, earned similar honors by crushing the competition at the Eastern States, also by the New York State Federation within the New York State Class B Division, within Local Section 9, pause for a breath here, and of course, for Orange County, New York. And whereas Ms. Beloga's wildly successful 2022 season was the culmination of years and years of commitment, dedication, sacrifice, and hard work, replete with early morning workouts, running and lifting weights in the cold and dark, and with scant few observers as she exhibited a work ethic, the envy of the entire athletic community, and the pride of, of coaches Dave Foyer and Brian Creedon, and of the entire Cornwall dragon community. So the six people that sit up here, oh, okay. The six people, I'm supposed to move us up here because, that's right, it doesn't pick it up on the camera. So the six people seated up here all have children that have gone through the Cornwall school system. Josh obviously has children going through there now. Alright, the pinnacle was her record-shattering 2022 campaign, methodically and steadily built across a number of seasons, most crucially between 2018 and 2021, when Carrie earned All-American honors three times. Twice was named the Eastern States Champion, twice was named the New York State Champion, was a three-time National Cross Country Championship Qualifier, 11th place, then 4th place, and then 1st place, notice the trend here, with a scratch year due to COVID-19. She was a four-time Section 9 Champion with a canceled COVID-19 season, a four-time Orange County Cross Country Champion with a canceled COVID-19 season, and a Section 9 Bear Mountain Course Record Holder with the second fastest time of all time. And finally, she won the Burnt Hills Invitational Championship, where she still owns the course record. And whereas this Cornwall High School senior completed the 2023 National Championship Race in a blazing 16 minutes, 49.2 seconds, one of the course's fastest times ever by a high schooler, and elected to seize the championship by attacking the field's best competition on a massive hill, I heard about this from Mr. Simo, wobbling their knees as our Cornwall champion staked her claim to yet another crown. So now therefore, be resolved by virtue of the authority vested in me as the 29th Mayor of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson, New York, and on behalf of this very proud village board, and as a result of the great honor, acclaim, and distinction Carrie Beloga has brought to our Cornwall community across much of her young lifetime, I do hereby proclaim today, Monday, March 27, 2023, Carrie Beloga Day in the Village of Cornwall and Hudson, New York, given by my hand, James A. Galliano, Mayor of the Cornwall Hudson, New York. Congratulations.
So there's no possible way that I was going to repeat the proclamation that Officer just read.
I'm winded.
So we actually have a certificate of recognition. So on behalf of the Town of Cornwall, we would like to commend Carrie Beloga, Cornwall Central High School class of 2023, for outstanding accomplishments as a national cross-country champion, and who continues to bring great honor and distinction to the local community. And witness whereof, we have caused this certificate to be signed this 27th day of March in the year of 2023, signed by the town clerk, Jambon Kormek, and myself, town supervisor. There you go.
We don't wanna put you on the spot too much, but if you wanna say any words, I think what we wanna know here is, how did you do it, and what are you gonna do next?
Oh, lots of hard work and dedication went into just that one moment. That was five years in the making. I went there, I went to Nationals my first year in 9th grade. So from then, it was my dream to cross the tape and win my own national championship. So from there, I took it to Australia during a weird sort of cross-country indoor track season, and I had my coach Foyer and coach Creedon and my parents help support me along that journey. I know that's a little difficult to juggle the two, but I had so much fun being able to do that with my team, with my coaches, with my family. So going to Australia was an experience that I will never forget. And now I'm gonna be going to the University of Colorado in a couple of months, so I'm super excited to reflect what I've done here to where, what I'm gonna be doing next.
So you're gonna be at Buffalo?
I am gonna be at Buffalo.
Normally, normally you ask adults to come up here and speak, and they clam up and they get nervous. And listening to her, I hope that, Josh and I hope you never challenge us for the top position. So anyway, I've got another round. We wanted to do something here, Mom and Dad, Coach, well done, alright? Everybody we came to see you. We normally have tumbleweeds going through our meetings, so just having people here is a nice thing, and it's because of you. Alright, if you're not here for Carrie, this might be a good time to leave because the rest of the meeting is root canal with no Novocain. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, Dave, I'm sorry. Hold, hold on one second.
As, as the.
Hold on one second.
First of all, I think a lot of times, we don't give enough credit to the coaches. Dave's been coaching a long time, Brian Creedon's been coaching a long time. So she's not only a world-class runner, she has a world-class family. I had the privilege of seeing her mom run and crossing the finish line here in Cornwall a couple of times first. Also, they may be the only family in the history of Cornwall to have four state championships because they have two football championships because her, her brother kicked for two Cornwall championship football teams. And now is at Cortland with many of our kids, so, and he's the kicker for Cortland. So it's a great family, and they've done a great job, and the coaching has been outstanding as it has been. We continue to put up state championships and Section 9 championships. So everyone deserves a lot of credit.
I think, I think after, after Aisling Cup, nobody thought that that could have been replicated, and then Carrie decided to come along and just crush it and do even better. So anybody else on the board wanna say anything?
I wish I was still writing for the Times-South Record. I was a writing columnist for them as well, but alas, I'm not anymore. Congratulations.
Thanks, guys. Alright, get out of here before you get sucked into the meeting. We'll give them a minute, and then we'll get started. One amazing kid, huh? Polish, the polish.
Yeah, Ashley didn't say two words. She is quiet, very nice.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and begin the meeting now. We got a lot of stuff to grind through. And just a reminder, there will be a special meeting on Thursday night at 5:30. The village clerk posted it today, and at that meeting, the village board will entertain the proposal that was given to us that was prepared by the Steering and Planning Committee of the Donahue Farm Property. So that will be Thursday night at 5:30 inside this room. And then next week, on April 3rd, we have the board's reorganization meeting slash work session. So that's gonna be a busy meeting as well. And then on April 17th will be the regularly scheduled business meeting for the village board. Okay, moving on to matters in front of the board tonight. The first thing is the public hearing for the MS4 Stormwater Management Plan. Proof of Notice affidavit of posting and publication having been furnished, the public hearing of the MS4 Stormwater Management Plan is now called to order. I'm gonna make a motion to open it. May I have a second? All in favor? Alright, the MS4 Stormwater Management is a Department of Environmental Conservation program that assures communities they're doing their part to combat stormwater pollution. Each year municipalities are required to file a report which demonstrates measures taken during the year to show compliance. Now, I need to open up for any comments from the public. Anybody wish to speak in regards to the public hearing related to the MS4 Stormwater Management Plan? Seeing no one, I am going to make a motion to close the public hearing. May I have a second? All in favor? Alright, next item in business is public comment. There's a period to talk at the beginning of our meetings, and there's also an opportunity for public comment at the end. This is the first one. Does anybody from the public wish to address the village board? Sir?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
You scheduled a meeting for Thursday here?
Yes.
We have that scheduled for sent.
I have the special meeting in our conference room.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I think I did misspeak and say it was here. You're right. So our, our special meeting will be in the, in the, in the work session room. Sorry about that. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Alright, seeing no one wishing to speak from the public at this time, I'm gonna move on to the minutes. I'm gonna make a motion to accept the February 27, 2023 Business Meeting Minutes as presented. May I have a second? All in favor? Alright, Rich, I think you have to abstain, though.
Oh, I wasn't here.
Yep, so you're an abstention.
Special meeting or the regular?
This was for the business meeting.
I was here.
Yep. You were here for the business meeting?
In March? Yeah.
February, yeah, yep. Alright, next, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the March 13, 2023 Special Meeting Minutes as presented. May I have a second? All in favor? Treasurers' Report, the Open Utility Balances Report for the end of February reads as follows. Village Water Sewer Garbage and Penalties, $290,231.40. Town Water and Penalties, $282,183.75. Warrant Number 3, I'd like to make a motion to approve this warrant and authorize payment including prepayments totaling $417,311.60. May I have a second? All in favor? The Revenue Expenditure Reports by Fund R, the General Fund Revenue, $4,468,150.78 with expenditures of $4,725,327.12. Water Fund Revenue stands at $2,700,188.19 with expenditures of $2,963,985.57. And the Sewer Fund Revenue currently stands at $579,306.18 with expenditures of $330,191.56. This stands for the total receipts number of $7,747,645.15, which is 98.61% in anticipated revenues and $8,019,504.25, or 102.07% in anticipated expenditures through the end of February. The Sewer Capital Fund Balance is $553,341.58, including interest through February 28. Moving on to Board Department Reports, the Building Department, trustee Carnwright.
Village of Cornwall Hudson Building Department Report for February 2023. Building permits issued, 6. Certificate of Compliance occupancy issued, 6. On-site inspections, 25. Violations, 0. Stop work orders, 0. Municipal searches, 1. Solar panels, 0. Fire inspections, 18. Manny Carmona, Code Enforcement Officer.
Any questions from the trustees? Anything to add, Senor Camona?
No, sir.
Okay, alright. Moving on to the Fire Department, Deputy Mayor Kane.
Okay, Cornwall Hudson Fire Department, they report for February 2023. With respect to events, there were two automatic alarms, four EMS calls, one structure fire, mutual aid to Cornwall, one brush fire, two wires down, three training events, three drills, one apparatus slash station maintenance, two meetings, and one funeral, for a total of events, total of 25 events, and the total volunteer hours were 280. The chief notes that the department has submitted a request to the Cornwall Yacht Club for a slip for Boat 416 for the 2023 boating season. Firefighters Jacqueline Dolan, Brittany Lindenberger, Wade Knoller, John Ortiz, Captain Tom Trainer, and Lieutenant Charles Quinn completed the ice rescue awareness training that was offered by Orange County. Dolan, Ortiz, Quinn, and Trainer also completed the trainings for trench rescue awareness and basic structural collapse operations. And the February drills included knots and ropes types, uses, rescuing, hoisting tools, large area searches, and maintenance, and forcible entry. Lastly, the chief notes that on March 1, all self-contained breathing apparatus were flow-tested. One high-pressure hose was identified as needing to be replaced. Charles Quinn, Fire Chief.
Chief, anything to add?
Only that it was seven automatic alarms, not two.
Oh, that's alright.
Okay.
What's high pressure?
I'm sorry?
What's high pressure? High-pressure hose. How, how many pounds?
4,500.
Whoa.
Any other questions from trustees for the chief? Nope. Moving on to Police Department, trustee Brain.
Cornwall on Hudson Police Department, monthly report, February 1 through February 28, 2023. There were 346 total calls for service. There were no felony calls. There was one call regarding fraud, one harassment or aggravated harassment call. There was one arrest for misdemeanor. Vehicle and traffic, there were four property damage accidents. 11 traffic summonses issued, five traffic warnings issued, two parking summons issued, four traffic enforcement posts, and two speed radar sign postings. Under non-criminal activity, there were eight fire response calls, one domestic incident, seven alarm response calls, six suspicious incident calls, one animal complaint. And in terms of departmental assists, there were five assists to the Town of Cornwall PD, seven EMS, three for other police agencies, and three citizens assists. During the month of February 2023, Cornwall on Hudson PD applied for approximately $2,185.38 in grant funding from the Perma Bulletproof Vest Outer Carrier Grant Program for the purchase of both bulletproof vests and outer carrier vests for COHPD officers. And the chief submits a request to have Mr. John Dunworth interview with the COH Village Board at the March 2023 Work Session for a part-time police officer position with COHPD on Monday, March 13 at 6:30 PM, which activity did take place. Respectfully submitted, Chief Stephen E. Dixon.
Chief, anything to add?
No, just, you know, come out when we, when we do resolutions for the resignation meeting.
Yep, we're on it. Any other questions for the chief before we move on to Department of Public Works? Trustee Carnwright.
Department of Public Works, February 2023. Trash collected for the month, 79.5 tons. Recycling collected for the month, 19.25 tons. Yard waste, no yard waste yet. Routine maintenance performed on village vehicles, repairs and maintenance of street sweeper preparing for the season. Pretreating of roads for ice and snow storms, plowing of roads, clearing of sidewalks, snow removal from parking lots, areas and lots, street sign repairs. Work continues on painting and new flooring in the village hall, which I believe is almost done. Our repair started on the 1994 street sweeper hopper had rusted out beyond use. Notes, spring bulk cleanup, April 24. Electric will be restored to the barn at the, at Donahue Farm in March. After that, we will have the well tested for drawdown for the garden. Dave Alverson, Public Works Superintendent.
Okay, Dave, anything to add? Was, and Dave, I may have missed it. Did you mention the spring bulk pickup for April 24? Okay, I'm sorry, I missed it. Alright, Water Department, Superintendent Trainer is away with family. So for the report, trustee Gaylord.
Village of Cornwall Hudson Water Department, February 2023. 18,483 gallons of monthly production, giving you a daily average of 660,000 gallons. Samples, we collected 46 samples in accordance with our approved water quality monitoring plan. Performed special VOC sampling at request of Orange County DOH in response to community current concern of an unknown odor and dirty rain. Treatment, Black Rock Water Treatment Plant remains offline. The New York State DEC has provided comments on our SPDES application, which P and D Engineering are addressing. Transmission and distribution. 49 utility markouts were completed. Fire hydrant replaced at the intersection of Mountain Road and 9W that was damaged as a result of a motor vehicle accident. Repaired the fire hydrant in front of the Cornwall Library. Water main break repaired on Oars Mills Road, Union Street, and Payson Road. Boil water advisory issued and subsequently rescinded on Oars Mills Road and Union Street. New service line installed on 295 Main Street. Repair residential curb valve on 34 Harold Avenue, 5 Isro Drive. Water shut off at property owner's request on 117 Main Street and 34 Harold Avenue. Meters, red commercial meters, three final water meter readings were completed. Seven residential water meters replaced, eight meter transmitters replaced, four miscellaneous jobs completed, eight water line inspections were completed. Installed new water meter pit on Autumn Lane. First phase of water meter customer portal, BETA testing is completed. Other, renovation work continues at the Jackson Avenue Treatment Facility. Vehicle maintenance, snow removal, fully executed escrow and developers agreement have been received from Storm King Arts Center. Sincerely, Michael P. Trainer, Water Superintendent.
Alright, with Mike not here, any questions you'll have to hold him to?
I was wondering if Jason could comment on the, on the speedy permit on the Black Rock. Have we supplied comments, or we haven't, or we have?
We have submitted a report. I don't actually believe that there was comments received in regards to this communication between Aaron and Mike.
Okay, I was just wondering. So we're still off, though, right?
We're still off until that, until we are able to address that.
Alright, moving on to New Windsor, Cornwall EMS, Deputy Mayor Kane.
Okay, the report from Cornwall, New Windsor EMS for February. With respect to personnel, there were no staff injuries. All yearly mandated classes were completed, two training classes were completed, and life member, board member, Virgil Jimeno passed away unfortunately. With respect to operations, there were 350 total dispatches. 100% of the calls were covered. They only had 201 calls in February of 2022, and the chief notes that there's over 725 calls for this year so far, 23% increase over 2022. There were 256 responses in New Windsor, 52 responses into the Town of Cornwall and 13 into the Village of Cornwall and Hudson. Mutual aid, so there were 19 to the Town of Newburgh, 13 were Crystal Run ALS intercepts, three to the City of Newburgh, two to Woodbury, and the Cornwall unit covered those. Five Highland Falls, then the Cornwall unit covered those also. Zero to Blooming Grove, Washingtonville, and zero to Montgomery. The average response time is 7.04 minutes to New Windsor. The average response time in, to Cornwall is 5.56. 30% of the calls were in Cornwall, 30% of the calls were 19 Laurel slash Landmark, making response times very low. The average response time is 7 minutes and 1 second in Cornwall and Hudson, and chief notes based on lower, lower call volume. He said note that this month we had multiple calls at the same time causing slightly longer response times as other units had to clear assignments. The New Windsor units have responded to seven second calls in Cornwall, while the Cornwall unit responded eight times to third calls in New Windsor. With respect to vehicles, all vehicles are in service. The first time, first time in our agency, agency history, we have now six ambulances. And as for equipment, new replacement parts were placed in the heart monitor, placed in heart monitors, and they're having, the chief notes, they're having serious issues with obtaining medication. Most vendors are telling them that it's gonna be months to obtain the medications. And that's it.
Last week, Supervisor Wojciechowski and myself traveled to the 1 Clinton Street address to see some training that was going on there, and I'm gonna continue to report as I walked around the building and just saw what was going on, that it, they're doing everything that we've asked them to do and, and then some, the building. And I encourage the other trustees, when you get a chance, if you haven't been there recently, just to reach out to Chief Big, just so that he's there and can help you with the tour or pop in and, and take a look at things, but you will be, you'll be impressed. They're doing a great job. Alright, moving on to resolutions. Joe, is it okay to do the Cornwall Yacht Club here at the top? Because it's, okay, alright, so I'm gonna add a resolution to the top. We were, we were finishing this as we were getting ready for the meeting tonight. So whereas the Village of Cornwall and Hudson has been placed on notice that certain property owners within the village claim that Shore Road, a public highway of the village, is not a public road. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the village board of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson hereby authorizes and directs the attorneys for the village, Katania, Mahan, and Rioter PLLC to commence an action to declare the village's rights in and to Shore Road, and to name such property owners, easement owners, or other necessary parties as defendants as may be required to prosecute the action to obtain the declaratory judgment in favor of the village. May I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Alright, moving on to the next item, which is the first one listed under resolutions, the MS4 Stormwater Management Plan Adoption Annual Report. I'm gonna make a motion to accept the MS4 Annual Report as prepared by Pittingaro and Deutsch Consulting Engineers for the period March 9, 2022 to March 9, 2023, and further authorize that the report be signed by myself as the mayor and filed with the Department of Environmental Conservation before the G. the Department of Environmental Conservation before the June 1st deadline. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Dave, I just want to make, I just thank you very much for acknowledging in here that the focus for next year is increasing the awareness of our recycling program, so I appreciate that on behalf of the committee.
Oh, my sweet mother of mercy. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next item of business under resolutions, to approve the annual Riverkeeper River Sweep Cleanup Event scheduled for May 6th, 2023. I'd like to make a motion to approve the annual Riverkeeper River Sweep Cleanup Event on Saturday, May 6th at Donahue Memorial Park. In addition, to allow parking for volunteers and provide cleanup of trash and recyclables by the Department of Public Works after the event ends. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'll just add a little color to this. The Cornwall Conservation Advisory Council annually sponsors this event at Donahue Memorial Park. I know a number of trustees have participated in this and a lot of other folks around the village, and our DPW does a great job with helping out with picking up the debris and the refuse and the garbage that gets pulled out of the Hudson and from along the Hudson, and the police department helps us out as well as keeping everything safe down there. The event typically runs from nine AM to twelve noon, and the gazebo, or the shelters it's referred to in village lingo, is used as a staging ground for everyone to meet up and receive instructions. The end of the parking area near the railroad crossing serves as a staging ground for the collection of trash and debris. And that's that. All right, moving on to the next item for resolution, up for resolution. The authorization of a one-month rental of the hydro excavator truck for the Water Department. This is a regular thing that we had, we've been doing. Mike Trainer, our Water Superintendent, has requested authorization again this year to rent a hydro excavating vacuum truck for the month of May 2023 in order to complete scheduled water repairs. Last year, the department was able to complete over twenty system-wide repairs, including water mains, main valves, curb valves, and meter pits. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a one-month rental in May of 2023 of a hydro excavating vacuum truck from Super Products in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on. Utility bill corrections. Upon the recommendation of Water Superintendent Trainer, I'd like to make a motion authorizing a reduction of one thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-six cents on utility bill account number seven eight nine six two one two Willow Avenue, Cornwall, New York, and a reduction of nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-six cents on utility bill account number seven four eight five dash one eight John Street, New Windsor. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd also like to note in relation to this that the Water Superintendent performs periodic reviews of our billing records as well as a review of individual accounts, either at the customer's behest or whenever a water meter is repaired and/or replaced. Next item up for resolution, approval request for proposals or an RFP for a part-time village planner. This brings me great sadness. Last month, the Village Board voted to authorize the village clerk to advertise for a part-time temporary planner to assist the village in updating elements of its zoning code to reflect the requirements of its recently adopted comprehensive plan and provide guidance and documentation on additional matters related to village assets, improvements, and other processes with a return date of March 24th, 2023. No proposals were received. So I'd like to make a motion authorizing the village clerk to re-advertise the request for proposals through Gannett Publishing, meaning we're going to broaden our aperture as far as putting it out in a, in a broader swath to the public, um, and, oop, I just lost my place, through Gannett Publishing with the return date of April 17th, 2023. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Sir?
Mr. Mayor, that's, that's only, did you say April 17th?
April 17th, 2023.
That's not even three weeks?
That is three weeks.
Is that sufficient time for, to get the responses?
It's in time for our next meeting. I didn't want to put it off till May because I know that would affect other parts of the plan, so I had suggested, I have no issue moving it to May if you didn't think that would have any issues.
Yeah, I.
Because that's our meeting date for April, it's the seventeenth.
Which is why we picked that date.
Okay, I'm just asking the question, that's all.
April 17th is the business meeting, the combo meeting's April 3rd.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
What are you thinking, Bill?
I'm, I'm wondering about the other aspects of the plan, uh, piece here. I think it's essentially, it's, uh, look at the bulk tables in the zoning code is, is the majority of what we need, but then also evaluate other aspects of, you know, we're going to be evaluating the Donahue Farm Plan, uh, draft plan, and then there's, you know, questions about projects that people might start suggesting related to the New York Forward Grant, but I don't think any of that's contingent on it being done in April.
So you're comfortable with extending the time past the April 17th?
If necessary, unless, unless the clerk is thinking of a specific deadline that's escaping me at the moment. Anything? No, okay. It does slow things down, uh, to the extent that we want somebody to be looking at these things.
What would be a reasonable amount of time, a month, or do you think we should go longer than that?
Make it the May business meeting instead, which sort of cuts, splits the difference, or is that?
Well, I think that would be the twenty-second, no.
I'm not, sorry, the work session, I meant to say.
That would be the eighth.
Pull it up, so we're talking, here's, here's May.
Work session, the eight, fifteenth.
Yep, eighth and fifteenth.
Oh, yeah, fifteenth, you're right, I'm sorry.
Sir, so we're suggesting the fifteenth to the?
Or the? The eighth, I think.
You want to do with the eighth?
Add an additional couple of weeks.
Okay, so I'm going to amend this motion to authorize the village clerk to re-advertise the request for proposals through Gannett Publishing with a return date of May 8th, 2023. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I would just look to see, is, does the attorney for the village believe that this is an appropriate amount of time to?
Well, it's more time. I mean, I was, I was concerned about three, three weeks, I just, yeah.
Okay.
But I do have a question. Was the advertisement itself as a part-time planner, are, are we really looking for a quote from planning firms? I'm not sure what the advert, advertisement says. Part-time planner.
Somebody that would come in here on an hourly basis, we have money set aside in the budget that the village board set aside for this purpose, and look, we would entertain anything if somebody comes in and says, we have a, we have a group of people that we'd like to do this, I'd bring it to the village board and say, is this acceptable? What's your price and how would they do this? I mean, ideally, I think we're looking for somebody to come in and work X amount of hours a week.
If we don't get a response by May, Joe, that, that could be step two, is by doing the advertisement where you're going.
We, we do have a clause in the RFP that says, while we've advertised this as a part-time planner, we would be open to other ways of structuring the arrangement, so if a planning firm were to submit a proposal as part of this response, we could work that into the process.
You good?
I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on. Storm King Engine Number Two, request to hold annual inspection dinner at Donahue Memorial Park. I'm in receipt of a request from Storm King Engine Company Number Two wishing to hold their one hundred and fifty-fifth annual inspection dinner at Donahue Memorial Park on Saturday, June 10th from four PM to eight PM. The plan, they tell me, is to set up on Friday, June 9th. The rain date is Sunday, June 10th. In the event the entire weekend has rained out, Storm King Engine Company Number Two would like to hold the event the following weekend. Uh, I'm sorry.
Did you say 10th?
I did?
Yeah.
Oh, boy. The rain date, let me amend that, is actually Sunday, June 11th, not June 10th, I misspoke. In the event the entire weekend has rained out, the company would like to hold the event the following weekend. Chief, anything to add before I make a motion to approve this?
Um, I'm not part of that committee.
Oh, boy, another Punches Pilot today. I've had a lot of Punches Pilots. All right, I'm going to make a motion to approve the event subject to receipt of an insurance certificate listing the village as additionally insured. Further, to support Storm King Engine Number Two's application for and receipt of a one-day permit to serve beer and wine. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next resolution, introductory local law to establish the stop intersection, stop sign at the intersection of Willis, of Willis Avenue and Weeks Avenue. I'm going to introduce the following resolution and move this board to adopt it. Whereas establishing a stop intersection at Willis Avenue and Weeks Avenue will calm traffic flow and increase safety for pedestrians and the driving public, and whereas the village board wishes to set a time and place for a public hearing to consider the adoption of amendment to Chapter 155 dash 42 of the Village Code to establish the stop intersection at Willis Avenue and Weeks Avenue. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the village board hereby determines that it will be the lead agency with respect to the review of the proposed local law hereafter named the project in accord with the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act or SEAKER in Part 617 of the Regulations Implementing SEAKER, since there are no other agencies that have the authority to approve the project, and let it be further resolved that the village board hereby classifies the action as an unlisted action under SEAKER, and let it be further resolved that a public hearing be held by the village board in order to receive comments and suggestions regarding the proposed local law and to receive any comments concerning the potential adverse environmental impacts of the proposed legislation in accord with SEAKER on April 17th, 2023 at seven PM at the village hall located at 325 Hudson Street, Cornwall and Hudson, New York, and it is further resolved that the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause said public notice of said hearing to be given as provided by law. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? That means you can't go speeding down there, Mr. Chaudry, when you come out of your neighborhood. Any further conversation or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Street Sweeper, we're going to accept the specs and set a bid date. I'm going to make a motion to accept the bid specifications prepared by DPW Superintendent Dave Halverson for a quote, "pre-owned street sweeper truck-mounted Johnston Sweeper," close quote, set a bid opening for Thursday, April 13th, 2023 at two PM, and authorize the village clerk to advertise for bids. Dave, anything to add on that? All right, may I have a second? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Um, so in regard to the conversations we had earlier, gentlemen, so the chief mechanic's job has been, we've authorized that posting at a, at an earlier meeting. So tonight, what we're going to, um, hopefully authorize through this motion is an authorization for DPW Superintendent Halverson to advertise for one labor position in the Department of Public Works. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next item under resolutions, authorize advertisement for part-time building inspector. After consultation with, uh, the build, the village board across these past low few months and recent conversations with the Building Inspector Code Enforcement Officer, Mr. Carmona, I'm going to propose a motion to authorize the village clerk to advertise for a part-time building inspector. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Sir?
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, I thought we had, I feel out of the loop on this one.
We do, so, so, uh, Mr. Carmona works twenty hours a week, Mondays, Mondays, uh, Tuesdays and Thursdays. We hired a second building inspector, um, who's out right now on an injury, um, and she, Ms. Teganga, works ten hours a week. So the village board was of the mind that we need to get the department to fill the orders and the requests and the inspections in a timely fashion up to what it used to be for many, many years, forty hours a week. So that's why we're looking, Ms. Teganga cannot work twenty hours a week, so we're looking for someone else to fill that vacancy.
Got it.
All right, all right, any further discussion? All right, did I get a second? Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, um, moving on to the next resolution. Special event permit for a film shoot at the Storm King School, which is at the top of Mountain Road and intersects with 9W, scheduled for April 7th of 2023. I'm in receipt of a special event permit application requesting permission to hold a film shoot at the Storm King School on April 7th, 2023 between the hours of nine AM and five PM. No village services are being requested and no vehicles will be parked along Mountain Road. So I'd like to make a motion to approve this request, set the permit fee at our standard two hundred and fifty dollars. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Just one question, this is a private entity, so why? Why, why are we, why are they submitting an application?
Because they're filming the village.
Because it's filming.
Oh, I thought it's being filmed. Well, is it just completely on, on, uh, okay, all right, you're right.
Yeah, I had, I had the same question, but is this discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I noticed, I did notice in the application that they indicated that they would not need any village services, but they also indicated there would be one hundred people at the event?
It's at the Storm King School.
Yeah. I, that I understand, but I just throw it out to the board, if there were going to be that many people, I don't know if it's something that the chief should weigh in on, if it could cause some traffic, I mean, if they pull in and park, maybe there's no impact at all.
Well, they've got, they've got parking, it's, um, the date is, the date is April 7th, 2023, Dave, between nine and five.
School would be in session.
Yeah, because.
Yeah, no, no, you're right, I'm, I, I've lost it there. Yes, yeah, I get it.
I've had neighbors that did it inside their house and had to get a filming permit.
Totally understood, what threw me was, was the portion when you were saying that they're not asking for any services. I was assuming that this was off, off the grounds, like right next to, on the street and so forth, so I get it, I totally get it.
Okay, any further discussion? Did I get a second?
I would, I would just say that to, for, to address the attorney's concern, I mean, the Storm King School is quite large, there's an auditorium there that holds well over a hundred people, I think that they could easily absorb the size of crowd that they're proposing for the shoot, I would imagine.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that, since my wife is actually a graduate of the Storm King School, so I've been sucked into a number of different alumni events there.
You mean, been able to attend?
I misspelled, yes. All right, moving on. Oh, no, um, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, you got five ayes. All right, next order of business for resolutions, resignation and reinstatement of part-time police officer. I'm in receipt of a letter from part-time police officer Daniel LeBoden reporting his need to resign from the village police department effective March 31st, 2023, and requesting he be rehired effective April 5th, 2023. Chief, before I do this, because I have to do this in two separate motions, anything to add to provide color to the board?
Yeah, this is, um, this is protocol for him to receive his New York State retirement.
Okay.
The actuality, he has to be off the books for one day in order to get his retirement.
And then you can be rehired?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay, any, uh, let me go ahead and do the first motion then. I'm going to make a motion to accept the resignation request of Officer LeBoden effective March 31st, 2023. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and to bookend to this is, I'm going to make a motion to reinstate Officer LeBoden effective April 5th, 2023. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we got through all the resolutions, we're now moving on to other business. Um, so, um, yeah, since Bill set it up, Bill, I'll turn that over to you as far as the, what we're going to look to accomplish at the special meeting and anything else related to the, uh, the committee that you think the board should be versed in.
Good. Uh, the Donahue Farm Planning Committee submitted a draft report, uh, or a draft plan, about eighteen pages with a significant amount of background materials and appendices, including the governing documents for the property, and has asked the village board to review that and to offer feedback on it, uh, before moving to approve it as the plan going forward, whatever form that approval takes. So we have a special meeting scheduled since, uh, there was some travel and full agendas. A special meeting scheduled for this Thursday at five thirty in, uh, the conference room or, yeah, right, conference room, because there's some other meeting in here. And so we'll be doing that, we'll be reviewing the draft plan hopefully before that, but if not, we'll go through it during the course of that meeting, it's eighteen pages, it's pretty, uh, you know, it's not a, it's not a very dense document, there's, uh, graphics in it and it's highly explanatory and so on. In addition, there's a management agreement that we've received, a proposed management agreement we've received from Scenic Hudson as to maintenance for the gravel driveway and the trailhead parking area, as well as the beginning of the trail where it enters the large field and goes to the tree line where it gets taken over by the New York, New Jersey Trail Conference. Scenic Hudson and the village, uh, kind of both have responsibility for the trail from that, in that grassy field. So they've given us a proposed agreement that has some, uh, conditions within it and, uh, is in line with the governing, uh, conservation easement and the public access plan that are already in force, but, uh, we just had some, you know, we, uh, the attorney for the village has been reviewing that and may have some response to it, I had a little feedback, so we'll all just look through that again as well, it's just three pages. I did have a conversation with the chairman of the Donahue Farm Committee this evening, the, the big thing that they've asked is that we combine to form one Donahue Super The, the big thing that they've asked is that we combine to form one Donahue Super Committee, the Donahue Park Committee and the Donahue Farm Committee, so the waterfront committee and the, uh, farm committee to merge them into a single, uh, committee. So the Donahue Farm Planning Committee currently has seven members. Uh, this would be, this is those large overlap between the two, this would add two members, high-powered individuals Eric Tenega and Dominic Cordisco, who are on the waterfront committee, they would, under this proposal, join the larger, the, uh, Donahue Farm Committee. So they would have, um, that as a working group to essentially manage both. They had raised this with, um, the Donahue Farm Committee met with Scenic Hudson to review the plan, uh, last week, and they mentioned that, and Scenic Hudson said that sounds like a great idea. Um, and they also offered some very light feedback on the plan that the chairman of the Donahue Farm Committee will join us on Thursday and can tell us what Scenic Hudson had to say, uh, et cetera. Um, the roof is still on, um, and, and complete, the garden is having a little trouble getting off the ground. Um, I'm going to be helping them with a little administrative stuff to do like a, a survey or a form, you know, for the public, a bunch of people have reached out to do it, but, uh, the person who's managing it on the committee is having.
Bill, not to interrupt you, but I'm going to interrupt you. Um, what is this, because I had a couple of people ask me about that. Do we realistically think that, that, that the community garden is going to be up and running for the spring planting season? Or are we looking down the road for doing it next year?
I imagine that they'll get, you know, it's going to be beds, you know, so it won't be full capacity by any means, but, uh, I do know that they are interested in making sure that the youth committee for the town is involved. Um, and I think they'll be able to get that going, I know that the fence is on order, I don't believe it's a huge, uh.
Deer fence?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's meant to be deer fencing, hopefully.
Yeah.
Deer often have different ideas, but, uh, it's on order, I don't think it's a huge lag time before they, uh, should be able to get it. Uh, so hopefully they can get that in the ground fairly soon and, um, I'm sure there'll be some planting in, in season this year.
Okay.
Um, but I, I wouldn't say it'd be by any means at capacity.
Got it.
Um, and, um, that's probably about it, uh, my conversation with the, with the chairman was both of us were driving and eating dinner at the same time, so, uh, on the phone, so I might have forgotten a couple of moments, a couple of, uh, notes. But other than that, it's, it's all proceeding, we're working on this plan and, uh, we hope to get, uh, closer to saying this is how, this is the direction forward and if we get a planner who can lend some eyeballs on that, that would be great. Oh, and they also want to, as with many other people, they want to, uh, identify some projects that they believe would be suitable for the New York Forward Grant.
Excellent.
Related to both the waterfront and the farm.
Excellent, because those are two signature pieces of what we're going to want to tie into the business district, and so, yes. Um, Bill, will you make sure to message the committee, in fact, both committees, if they're going to become what we're now referring to as the Super Committee, um, to advise them of Thursday's meeting at five-thirty to see if any of them want to be?
We could vote on it on Thursday perhaps to approve that merger, if we need to vote.
Oh, I think that's a, that's probably a pro forma, yeah, agreement, yeah. I don't think anybody's got a problem with the waterfront committee and the Donahue Farm Steering Committee combining into one committee, because it's the same people, same volunteers.
I would do it now.
You want to do it now, make the motion.
I'll, I'll accept a motion. No.
As per document, as per document.
Um, uh, I'll accept a motion, uh, to formally merge the Donahue Farm Planning Steering Committee and the Donahue, and the, uh, Village Waterfront, uh, Committee, I believe it's called.
Yeah.
Uh, into a, merge them into a single, uh, body, uh, meaning, in, in essence, meaning that the Donahue Farm Planning Committee will be joined by Eric Tenega and Dominic Cordisco as well as all extant members of the Donahue Farm Planning Committee. Does anyone make a motion?
Yeah, so I'll make the motion, but amend it to include the title of the, the, the new committee. What are we calling it?
Uh, the chairman of the Donahue Farm Planning Committee, who is also the chairman of the waterfront committee, proposed that we refer to it as the Donahue Committee.
Ooh, okay.
I thought that was, I thought it needed a noun in there, Donahue Properties Committee. He said the Donahue Committee in response to my suggestion. So we, we will have discussion if we get a second.
Second.
We have a second, is there any discussion?
Whatever name you need.
Whatever they decide to name it, they can.
The Donahue Committee, all right, well, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Bill, um, uh, to, just a final note on this, um, are you going to be around when, uh, Scenic Hudson makes their annual sojourn to the property on Friday, April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three?
Yes, I will attempt to join them.
I'm going to have to de-conflict something, I'd like to be there, but so long as I know that you're going to be there, then you'll, and they usually reach out the week before and say what time they're coming down, I want to think that, okay, good, all right, just want to make sure you want that.
Also, uh, at least two members of the Donahue Committee will be in attendance, uh, they've already, already booked it.
Excellent, okay, sounds like a plan, all right. Next order of business, proposed management agreement with the stole, I'm sorry, down, we, yep, down, I'm down to, that's other business. All right, well, um, village election results, um, I am pleased to announce that, uh, um, I had been afforded an opportunity to come back and serve one more term as village mayor and I'll be joined in, uh, returning to the board with my two esteemed colleagues, Dave Carnwright and Bill Brain, and the board will look this way, the way it is currently constituted for at least the next year. So congratulations to Dave and to Bill, um, good job and as people keep telling me now, okay, enough, now get to work, so that's what we're going to be doing. All right, next order of business is, where am I at, right here, the New York Forward Grant? Yeah, I'm not going to beat that one into the ground. Um, we are currently trying to get New York State to make their final approvals on the local planning committee, they actually call it the L P C. There were a list of names that were submitted from the town, a list of names that were submitted from the village in the original application that we put together, some of those have been tweaked, New York State is taking a look at it, they've, you know, okay, you've got two of these, we don't need that, or, you know, you've got too many of those, we, so that is being adjusted right now, once that local planning committee is blessed off by the Department of State within New York State, that is the, the governing body for this, um, we will then get to work quickly because we really have to within seven months have a list of projects, and I'm glad to hear that, that Bill mentioned that the Donahue Committee, um, is going to be engaged in this because we need that. Um, because remember what, you know, I was told, transformative, catalytic, ready-to-go projects. So that means not, you know, hey, this could be done two years from now, they want things that we can, we can actually make them happen, we can find a contractor, we can do it, and remember this, the village and the town, the Cornwall community has to spend the money first, then we get reimbursed by the state, so whatever we're looking to do, we've got to either purchase it outright or bond it out in anticipation that the state is going to pay us back. That's how that works. And I don't know yet, they've not made a decision on whether or not it will be per project or it'll be a quarterly reimbursement, like you got these three projects, um, already underway, okay, now we'll, we'll pay you for those or they'll just do it every quarter. Okay, moving forward, um, the naming of the records room, so, um, folks know that Joe Gill was a longtime president, you know, uh, what was his actual title with, uh, the, the, the?
He was the publisher.
Vice President and.
And general manager.
And general manager. Um, so he will be, he will be honored with the naming of our records room where the Village was in receipt of a grant and was able to have our records room completely remodeled, made fire safe, made floodproof, all the good things, security system, the whole nine yards, new floor, new shelving, and then we ended up hiring as part of that grant Barbara, and I'm going to, I'm going to butcher her name, and it's Fluke Hopt, did I pronounce that right? I know, I, I'm going to butcher it, but she's now gone from an intern into becoming a village employee and is handling our records now. Well, before Barbara, the first quote-unquote intern we have, which was a, a funny name for a man this accomplished, um, was Joe Gill stepped up and said, yep, I wanted, I wanted, I want to help out with this project, making a pittance to come in here and just go through our records and clean things up and organize them and help us and make our new system. So he unexpectedly passed away shortly into his tenure here. Um, so we're sad about that, but we will name the records room, which will have an official ribbon cutting on April seventeenth, which is our next business meeting, we will have a ribbon, we will have scissors, we have a plaque much like the one for Mayor Moulton's, who is over the door here to the boardroom, and we'll do the same thing for the records room. Okay, um, District Attorney's Guidance Regarding the Avoidance of Potential Conflicts of Interest. Um, people probably look at that and say, uh-oh, what happened, what's going on? Nothing, this is standard pro forma from, um, District Attorney Dave Hoover's office from the County Government Center, reaching out to all, um, elected officials in the county. And basically, it is just a two-page letter reminding us to avoid, exact words, uh, potential conflicts of interest. Um, discusses the general municipal law, which prohibits any officer, employee of any municipality, including members of any administrative board or commission, such as zoning or planning boards, to engage in any conflict of interest. Conflict of interest can appear nebulous and ambiguous, but that's why we have people to talk to, like the attorney for the village. We have an ethics committee now that is engaged, um, that can weigh in on things like that, so if there's a question about it, we'll go and ask those questions, but anyway, um, I think each of the trustees have a copy of this letter, just wanted to make them aware of it and, um, and that's that, so just a, a note that went out to everybody, the town got one, every elected official got one, reminding us not to, you know, make the mistakes of, um, potentially, um, you know, having a conflict of interest. Okay, next item is, um, the renewal of the beer and wine license for Village Pizza. Um, oh, wow. Um, so I'm in a receipt of a letter from Graziano Fiorello, owner of Village Pizza and Restaurant Incorporated, informing the Village Board that he is set to renew his beer and wine license. And counselor, if my memory serves me, I mean, the only position, the only thing, way the board would get engaged is if the board had an issue with a particular establishment getting a liquor license for, you know, issues with the establishment.
You, you, it's a notice to the Village Board, you can actually file an objection with the state liquor authority. That's the purpose of it, it's to put you on notice that they're renewing their liquor license.
Okay, does anybody on this board have any reason to be uncomfortable with Village Pizza, a place that has been there now for thirty-two years, um, having an issue with them having a liquor license?
Try it. Only that I would ask Gary to spell restaurant correctly on the, on the letterhead.
Oh, boy. On the letter, too, oh, boy, wow.
That'll, that'll win me some fans, too, I'm going to go buy some beer and wine there.
No sugar for you, my man.
That's right. All right, next item is summer playground, um, I wish I could do a little bit more messaging on this, but the supervisor in the town and myself, um, with the, uh, head of the rec department in the town as well as the former camp directors for summer playground and the town summer camp have a meeting early next week. Um, everyone knows that of the six facilities that the school district owns, from the high school, the middle school, and all the elementary schools, um, one of them that's in the village, in fact, the only one that's in the village, um, we use for summer playground, um, five of those buildings are going to be undergoing major renovations, um, as a result of the bond passing and, um, they're going to be doing serious renovations from changing windows to flooring to taking this business out of some places, yep, a whole, whole, whole deal. I was not able to keep us, our camp at Cornwall and Hudson Elementary School because the school district is insistent that extended school year, a program that they run for the county, that the children that are involved in that program, I think there's some seventy or eighty, need to use that school. So as a way to make this work, Walter Moran, who's in charge of facilities and grounds and maintenance for the school district, came up with a plan, talked to the supervisor and myself about whether or not we would be willing to conjoin camps this year and for the next two years, um, our summer playground will be at Lee Road. Now, how does that change things? Well, um, the discussion will be, do we combine camps? Do we keep the camps autonomous and just move one camp to the playground, the other one's in the auditorium, then the other one goes here, the other one goes outside, the other one goes to the pool and just move it around? Or conjoin them? Um, I think there is a lot of opinion out there that conjoining them would be nice, a lot of these kids know each other, live in the same neighborhoods, but go to different schools and it would be nice to do that. One of the things that we are going to have to do, and it's also on the top of our list of discussion, we cannot charge a different rate than the town does, and I believe the Village Board here does a little bit more on the subsidy side for camp than the town does. We will have to bring the rates, we'll have to figure out what that sweet spot is. And then the other thing is, I'm going to move without objection from the board that we extend our camp to the same hour that the towns are. We always end our camp at one, I think it would be helpful to our working parents to do what the town does and have it go till two. Last two things, um, number one, um, I'm going to have to come up with a transportation plan, and that's going to be tricky because parents are going to be coming to C O H, that's where the parents dropping off the extended school year kids are, we'll have to do something in the parking lot, we'll have to provide some transportation. I don't think it'll be a lot, because I think some parents that drive and drop their kids off, instead of dropping them off at C O H Elementary, they'll just drop them off at Lee Road, but there are some parents that do walk to camp with their kids and may not have that ability, so we'll have some type of traffic plan. And then Chief, I spoke to Johnny, Sergeant Pena yesterday about this, and I think I mentioned it to you that you guys get together, put your heads together, if there's a way for us to save money where all the kids are at the school at one time, we will have an armed officer there, that is a, that is a, you know, board supports that, you support that, the town is now coming around, they're doing the same thing we are, so if it makes sense that you can get away with one, great. If not, because one group of kids is going to the pool, there will be a cop with those kids and then one staying there, but wherever we have a group of kids, there'll be an armed police officer and you guys will come up with a security plan for how you want to work that. Um, other than that, any questions? That's really what I have right now.
Is it anticipated that the pool will be open?
As of right now, yes, but that is obviously something that, you know, going forward, and I hate to say it, but I agree, I mean, I know there's a lot of people that think if you shut the pool down, that's an awful thing. The pool is leaking thousands and thousands of gallons of water every year. That is treated water, and I'm not talking about treated for drinking, I'm talking about chlorinated water, and where does it go? It goes into the duck pond. So at some point in time, we're going to have to rip the band-aid off, and it's in the town, but obviously, you know, as a Village Board, we will be connected with them, especially since water is delivered by our water system, but there are plans underway to look at the shutting down of that and building a newer pool and bonding that out. And so that's going to cause an inconvenience for a summer or two, and I know that's a tough thing, but we'll work on plans in the interim to figure out how we'll mitigate that. But yes, Dave, as of right now, my understanding is we are still going to be using the, the town pool this year. Any other questions? That is the tentative plan, once I get things more hammered out, um, we will have a senior camp director, I don't know who that's going to be, but my old saying about if you have two quarterbacks, you have no quarterbacks, there'll be a senior camp director and then there'll be a camp director over the village kids and an assistant camp director over the town kids, and we'll make that decision on whether or not we're going to conjoin everybody or if we're going to keep them separate, but we're working on that. Okay, that's what I know. Um, Hudson Highland Nature Museum, I don't know if you've had a chance to, everyone knows that there are two places where the H H N M owns, one is out on Muser Drive, which is off of Angola, which is a beautiful site. Um, and the other one is down here in the village that I remember going to when they cut the ribbon there in nineteen sixty-eight or sixty-nine when I was three or four years old and my mother walked me down and my sister down the street to see the brand-new, uh, museum with animals in it. They're undergoing major renovations, and if you get an opportunity to stop down there, Tom Bregman is the, is the C E O over, over both locations, and Tom is working his butt off, but they've gotten some grants and some donations and they have really turned the inside upside down in modernizing it, as Manny would say, bringing it into code compliance finally, and, and it's really going to be something. I have asked Dave to look at and get me a price to pave the semi-circle, um, to, of their driveway. Dave got me a price, um, it's certainly not cost prohibitive if you ask me, I mean, money is money and it's tax dollars, but, um, Dave mapped it out, walked it around there, it's, it's pockmarked, it looks like the lunar landscape, um, and with everything else they, they've got going on and the fact that two years ago, um, well, about a year and change ago, we were able to strike a deal with them on a long-term lease and they began paying rent again after they hadn't for ten years. Um, I thought it'd be a good faith thing for the village, since we own the property and we own the building, for us to pave that for them, um, because it's for our folks and our folks are the ones that use it. So Dave gave me a price quote on it, not including man-hours, trucking and the markings, um, around eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars for that semi-circle there. Keep in mind that chunks of the boulevard, a big part of the boulevard that, that runs into the Hudson Island Nature Museum is going to be repaved this year, right, Dave, repaved or, what do you call it? It makes perfect sense. It makes perfect sense. Mildred and paid. But this would be a project that our guys would do. Our guys would do this project at the, at the nature museum.
That's a way to do it.
Uh, just a question. In, in keeping with their ethos of environmental sustainability and, and so on, uh, a permeable surface might be more aesthetically and sort of in thematically aligned with their mission. Obviously, it costs more money, it's difficult, and maybe even has maintenance challenges. But, um-
I don't think we have the ability to do it.
Well, it, it-
You're saying leaving it natural, then?
No, 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 no. Uh, there's, there's different kinds of, uh, there's, there's different kinds of block that you can put there that allow-
We talked about that down at the Donahue Farm property, but I thought the issue down there was the, the, being cost prohibitive. And then isn't there-
A long driveway and a big trailhead thing. This is a lot smaller.
True, but then what about the snowplows?
Yeah, also, always a question. So lots of questions related to that. I mean, if you look at, uh, Newburgh Toyota, they have a, a large area that they've done with that kind of, uh, permeable surface.
Does grass grow up through it and look ratty?
Uh, no, grass grows up through it and looks however you mow it. So it's basically, it's a firm, concrete area to park cars that stays flat, but you can allow, it'll allow-
But it will allow, it will allow vegetation to come through.
So, um, and then water doesn't run off directly into the stream there. So again, it's a cost issue.
Yeah.
Dave shaking his head. We don't-
You guys are the boss.
Yeah, but, but-
I would just say, maybe worth evaluation on some level to, uh, before we jump straight to asphalt.
Dave, do we have any experience in laying those permeable-
We're not qualified to do it.
Okay.
It's that simple.
No, we don't. I know that, uh, I believe it was Townham and Road did a, uh, bus area years ago. I don't know how that turned out, but they spent a fortune doing a commuter parking lot.
All right, maybe that's something you can talk to Tom about. And the thing is, I said, the village would be willing to go on the hook for this. It's a reasonable amount. I hear your point, and if they wanna go in that direction. Now, Dave did bring to me unsolicited and say that the walkway there, that he thought that putting like natural stone pavers down there, instead of just running up the macadam all the way to the front door and the steps. He said it would be nice to do that. I mentioned that to Tom Bregman, he did jumping jacks and thought that was the greatest idea. So the village can do that. So. All right, anyway, I'll keep you guys in the loop. I have to set up a meeting, and I should've done it earlier this, well, today's Monday, but this week sometime with, with Mr. Bregman and with Dave. And Bill, I'll check, and if it's a day that you're around, um, you can join us. Okay, moving on. Village sidewalks, um, we are gonna be doing lots of sidewalks. And guys, I think you remember my ethos, um, when we got the ARPA funds, that I was not committed to spending more than half of them, leaving the second half for the next mayor. Well, I am the next mayor, so we are going to spend ARPA funds, because remember, ARPA is not like New York Ford money. ARPA funds have to be spent within five years or the, or the, the federal government ostensibly, that's what they say, take them back. So I want to spend every penny. Um, and we have infrastructure, sidewalks, there's plenty of places this year, um, that we are looking at doing that. So I told Dave to, to look and give me a plan, paving and sidewalks, and that's what we're gonna spend the money on, absent somebody saying, well, I have a better idea on it.
I have a better idea on it. We've discussed the question of potentially, uh, working with the town to hire a social worker to assist.
Yes, yes.
Let's see where it fits in in the plan. I know we've-
You got it.
Verbally, all been more or less in favor of, of looking into that.
Were you able to take a look at Clinton Street as far as space?
Yeah, I, I wasn't sure which room he was specifying, but I saw Chief Big again more recently, and he said, yeah, it's a, it's a room right off the kitchen. It's a perfect, uh, perfect space. There's still the question of oversight, uh, salary and what the, what kind of, uh, employment it would be, so.
I think because the feds and the state consider infrastructure to be almost anything, that you could probably crowbar it in there. But Bill, I'll bet you there's some grant money, or I'll bet you there's some things that we could hit up, either Senator Scoofus or Assemblyman Ikis or somebody. There might be money in somebody's budget to cut us, you know, to cut us some money for that, at least for the first year. We talked about doing a trial period for a year, but yes, I do remember that, but. All right, um, going forward, what else is left? Work session, live streaming discussion. I had a wonderful conversation with my good friend Mark Frankel this morning. Um, when I was out today, did, did Mark happen to stop by? Awesome. And he took a look at what he needed, too. So Mark- And he spoke with Dave. Oh, well then, all right, then you guys are ahead of me. So I spoke to Mark, told him what the vision was. And the vision was, people have asked, well, why don't you just hold your work session meetings in here? And I just think that the intimacy of a work session, sitting around a table and working on a table in a smaller room, it just, it's just a better place. And because that piece of furniture is the oldest piece of furniture I believe we have that belongs to the village, um, I'd like to keep it in there if the cost is not prohibitive. Mark is looking into that. Dave, he talked to you. We had talked about a camera, we talked about a microphone, and we talked about a small monitor, like thirty-two inches, so we're not banging this thing around. What did he tell you?
We had a discussion. He was gonna put a, uh, proposal, I guess, together for us, uh, doing something very similar to this, a step-down version, which would have the mic built in.
Oh, okay.
And we should be able to tie it in, hopefully mount it on the wall, and there would be a smaller whiteboard where you could just hit it, go, and let the mic work and have the camera inside the-
Oh, wow.
So, we'll see what happens when that comes back in.
Okay. And, and as Dave pointed out, when we discussed it this morning at the department head meeting, it'd also be nice if you're running classes and you have a class in here and they're using the monitor, and you have a, a group of people meeting in the work session room, and you have the ability to use that monitor for a class or to, you know, hook your computer up to and, and, and run PowerPoint slides or something like that. So I think it would be a multi-use item. But we'll wait and see what the cost is, and then I'll try to get three of you to yes. All right, moving on. Um, area beautification, oh, um, yeah, this was, this, this was because I was very angry this morning that I stepped in dog poop right in front of the building where there's a sign that says, there are, there are pup mitts here, please use them in the trash can and clean up after your dog. And it got all over my sneakers, and I was very upset and angry about it. So I just thought I'd mention that, 'cause, yeah. Um, we're gonna be putting new dispensers. It's from the Greater Cornwall Chamber of Commerce down at, uh, the waterfront, correct? Up here, I try to make it as easy as possible. We've always had one at the bandstand, a garbage can for dog poop and a, and poop mitts, and we have one at town hall. So this past year, Dave put one right out front for us next to the crypt. So we're gonna make sure it stays stocked during these dog-walking months, um, and just ask people to do that, 'cause it's pretty bad when they literally bring their dog to poop on the lawn at village hall. I, I think they're sending a message.
If I may add-
Yes.
Tending members of the public who are listening in, uh, please, please pay attention to that on the two places I've heard about it are Clark Avenue and Kelly Lane. Most recently, voters have contacted me.
Yep. Okay, um, moving forward, uh, duh, 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 all right, FYI. Village Board Reorganization Meeting Work Session, which is conjoined. Um, Trustee Brain will have to get sworn in after that date, 'cause you and Trustee Gaylord will not be here at the reorg meeting. Am I correct what I told him? Does he have a month from the date of April third to get sworn in?
I haven't had a chance to-
Okay, all right. We think it might be a month, but let's just make sure that you don't do anything to have a lapse in your carnation. All right, so that'll, so the swearing-ins will take place on, on April third, except for the guys that can't be here. Well, you don't have to worry about getting sworn in, it's just Bill. Um, the village board special meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, no, Thursday, the twenty-ninth at five-
Thirty.
Third-
March thirtieth.
That's Thursday, you're right. All right, March thirtieth, Thursday, in the work session room at five-thirty. And the village board business meeting is scheduled for April seventeenth at seven PM. And at the top of that meeting will be the ribbon cutting to the Joe Gill room. And with that, I'm gonna move to board comments, and I'll turn it over to Trustee Brain. I'm sorry, no, yeah, board comments, board comments, yep.
Do we go public last or board last?
Public is last.
I will say, um, thank you for merging the two committees. The, the chairman had asked me. He had, by the way, I should've said at the time, he consulted with the affected parties and everybody was fine with it.
Good.
Uh, congratulations to Mayor Galliano and, uh, Trustee Carnwright on their reelections. And thank you to Village Clerk Mahoney and to the election workers and everyone who turned out to vote.
Yeah, good point.
Very important, and, and it was good to see strong turnout. Uh, and my daffodils are coming up.
A lot of them are coming from the village.
They are coming up, yeah. Cocoon up. Uh, and I think that's all I have. I'm always afraid I forget, uh, to acknowledge the great efforts of all of our departments and personnel and citizenry. So consider everybody thanked and acknowledged.
All right. Um, Trustee Gaylord.
Uh, I have no comment.
All right, Trustee Carnwright.
Um, no, thank, thanks to everyone who came out and voted. It was a really good turnout for, you know, for Cornwall, really. Nine hundred votes. Um, thanks, uh, congratulations to Bill, Jim. I'm ready to go.
Excellent. And Deputy Mayor Kane.
Congratulations to you, Jim.
Thank you, sir.
Bill and, uh, and Dave, welcome, welcome back. Glad to have you. So, uh, look forward to working with you guys for another year.
That's excellent.
All right. All right, I'll just echo those comments to thank the clerk, who this was the first time in Cornwall and Hudson's history that we expanded the voting hours instead of twelve to nine PM. They were from six AM to nine PM, which really put, uh, a burden on the ladies and the gentlemen um, that worked the polls that day. It's a long day, fifteen hours, not including setup and breakdown at the end of the night. So thank you for that. Um, the Cornwall local asked me, um, what the takeaways were in regards to the expanded hours. Um, and I asked the village clerk, I think at twelve noon, we had two hundred and change voters by that point. So before we would've normally opened. Now, there's two ways of looking at that, 'cause you know, statistics tell you whatever you want. So I can argue and say, look, two hundred and twenty-five or whatever the number was somewhere around there, people voted before. We would've been open if we hadn't expanded the hours. And yet, two years ago, we had thirty or forty more voters than we did this time. So-
For some reason, I think Gene would agree with that.
We had nine hundred and twenty-two voters in two thousand and twenty-one and eight hundred and forty-eight.
So a difference of about, of about-
Eighty.
Eight forty-eight? I thought it was more than that.
Eight hundred and forty, total. You have your absentees and stuff.
Oh, okay.
I thought it was more than that. Okay.
And nine twenty-two.
Oh, who, who, I see. Eight forty-eight who came to vote on the day.
Uh, gotcha. You're not included, 'cause there were sixty-one absentee ballots, so you're taking that out of it. I, I, I get it. So the conclusion we can draw is that we're both right. So there, so we had, we had, we had, we had a lot of people in the morning, and that's great. But do we increase, were we getting people that wouldn't have been able to vote because they, they wouldn't have been?
Is there a records intern on staff who might be interested in, uh, parsing the voter records to determine if those who turned out before noon had previously voted in earlier elections or not? Uh, to the degree, you could, you could determine whether this opened the electorate to people who had not participated.
Since we passed this law already, let's not. Yes, and, and I'm proud to say that we had only one. Last year, we had zero people register on voter registration day in the village. Five hours, nobody registered. This year, we had one. It was a young lady who lives in the village, obviously, who had just turned eighteen that week. And I thought that was pretty cool, even though we only had one. It was somebody that got involved in the process right after they were eligible to vote. So excellent.
You can say no voter suppression, McCarty.
We know.
All right, uh, with that, um, with that, um, anybody, for the last opportunity for public comment, Mr. Chadri, please step up and state your name for the record and your residence.
Vishwa Chadri, uh, Thirteen Bar Avenue. I just have, uh, I need a clarification on the riverfront. The road that's between the yacht club and the railroad tracks. I'm assuming that is still public property, or is that the one in contention?
That's the one. The word is not contention, in question.
In question.
It is in question, yes. It is from the entrance to where the yacht club sign is, where the porta-potties used to be, where we used to have the porta-potties, all the way to the back where the big lot is where they keep the yachts. It doesn't actually-
So I can park there and nobody shall bother me.
Well, no, you can't park there, um, because there aren't parking spaces down there.
You, we have always parked there at an angle.
Well, there's no parking spaces, and there's, there, there, our belief is that that entire stretch of Shore Road, John, be very careful, that entire stretch of Shore Road belongs to the village. The, the yacht club is a different opinion of that.
Well, well, the, we own the road. We don't own the property. So the question is, who has access over that area? The village's position is that it's a village road, and it's open to the public.
Truth be told, I've been parking in there for twenty years. So, so people do park there.
Well, and people, people stand there.
My kids, you know, young kids park there and walk down the railroad tracks to go to wherever they jump. And I don't want, uh, Chief Dixon to come out and give me a hundred and fifty-dollar ticket.
Wow.
That's it?
Yeah.
That's it. So they can, we can park there.
So we're, we're, we are waiting to get a determination on the actual ownership of the road. But, um, I'm not telling you not to park there. I'm saying Shore Road, there's no parking along Shore Road.
Right.
Okay.
All right. All right, anything else? Yes, sir.
Uh, just for the benefit of anybody listening at home, there is a meeting here on Thursday at six o'clock with Central Hudson. They have representatives coming, uh, as well, I believe, Mr. P., uh, Public Relations, on the project that they're going to be doing on Mountain Road, Deer Hill Road, and Maple Road. They're going to be replacing the aged, high-pressure gas line that goes to West Point from approximately stable way, uh, eight hundred feet up Reservoir Road.
That's why we're in the work session room Thursday.
I will be here, as well as some of the other representatives.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Any other alibis from department heads, trustees?
Dave, just one last thing. When do you do the yard, yard waste pickup beginning?
April.
The first Monday in April, next Monday.
All right.
If you put it out before then, you will be ticketed.
All right, with that, I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody. Keep in mind, the mics are still live. The mics are still hot. All right, we got a lot done in an hour and twenty-five minutes.
Yep, well-run.
We did get a lot done. We got a lot done, a lot of, a lot of resolutions passed.
Too many.
Too many. How is it that you have that entire section there, and I'm stuck between these two piano legs here?
That's the way I earned it.
Well, here's, there's something to be said for that.